Welcome to the Murfreesboro City Council, July 21, 2016, in the newly renovated City Council chambers. So I know we're all glad to be back in the council. And Councilmember Ron Washington has our prayer and our pledge.
Hopefully, for the last time, I hope, Mr. Rob Lyons and Mr. Craig Tindell have told me I'll be here until September the 1st. So that was not good news to me. But let's have a moment of silence, please.
I plead with political allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have one ceremonial item tonight. We have the Tennessee Association of Chiefs of Police, the award presentation for state accreditation to the Murfreesboro Police Department. Doug Fielding, take it over.
Mayor, council members, I'm Jeff Hughes. I'm the Chief of Police in Brentwood, and I'm also the incoming president for the Tennessee Association of Chiefs of Police. And tonight, I'm here representing the TACP and recognizing your police department. And this is their second award in the Tennessee Law Enforcement Accreditation Program. That's something to be very proud of because this department has demonstrated their commitment to excellence and professionalism in law enforcement, and we're extremely proud of them. So I'd like to read this certificate that we have tonight to present. It says Tennessee Law Enforcement Accreditation Program. Be it hereby known that the Murfreesboro Police Department, having fully demonstrated its commitment to professional law enforcement by recognizing their responsibility to their community and the citizens they serve and protect, and having embodied the best professional practices with integrity by proving their compliance with the Tennessee Law Enforcement Accreditation Program, the Tennessee Association of Chiefs of Police and its Board of Directors does hereby award this certificate of meritorious accreditation effective on the first day of June 2016 and is recognized as an accredited law enforcement agency for the period of three years. And again, this is their second award. Mayor, Chief, congratulations.
Come out here.
behind this are the women and men of the organization, not only the law enforcement officers, but the civilians and communication dispatchers. They just do a phenomenal job day in, day out. And this is just reflective of the work they do every day. So thank you very much.
All right, you have the consent agenda in front of you, a rather lengthy consent agenda. Do you have any questions with any items that are on the consent agenda?
Mayor, would you mind reading through it?
No.
I'm just kidding. If there's no comments, I would move for approval.
Second.
All right, we have a motion of second. Ms. Wright.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. We'll take note on the bottom of the consent agenda if you will. See, you've got the Stacy Windrow 5K run and walk. So that's a great event, part of the Better Borough Project that we're endorsing. So make sure that you sign up for that. You've got three minutes, three meetings of minutes, June 2, 2016, June 16, June 23, all regular meetings. Any additions or deletions to the minutes?
Move for approval.
Motion of second. Ms. Wright.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. First readings, you have a letter from the principal planner with ordinance 16OZ28 regarding PCD, West Northfield Boulevard and Silver Springs Road.
Mayor McFarland, at the public hearing on June 16, the City Council conducted a public hearing to consider this matter. At that evening, the applicants requested to defer the items so they can make some changes to the program book. And you've been provided a copy of that program book. If you refer to page 17, you can see the changes that have been made. And these were in response to some comments made by members of the public at the Planning Commission Public Hearing. Those changes specifically are to prohibit the following uses: playing of any type of musical instrument, radio, TV, or other electronic device in a self-storage facility, and all of these apply to self-storage; repairing or working on cars, motorcycles, or any internal combustion engine; sanding, painting, sawing, or operating other power equipment; lodging, sleeping, or cooking; housing of any animals or other living creatures; parties, gatherings, meetings for any purpose; garage sales, flea market sales, or other public sales, except as stated above; and storage of hazardous, flammable, or explosive materials. This is consistent with the comments that we received at the planning commission. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them. We also have members of the team who represent the applicant here as well.
Do we need to make a motion on B?
No, we now, if there's no questions, we'll consider for passage on first reading, ordinance 16OZ28, the Minnan area in the planned commercial development, PCD District, located along West Northfield Boulevard and Silver Springs Road, 2016-417.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion of second. Ms. Wright.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Item 4A has been removed from the agenda. So we now will go to consider for adoption Resolution 15R PS66, adopt a plan of services for approximately 5.96 acres located along Foxfire Court, Linda Smith applicant. Mr. Blomley.
Thank you, Mayor McFarland, and good evening, Mayor McFarland and members of council. You may recall that on January the 7th, we held a public hearing on the annexation of 5.96 acres located along Foxfire Court. It's the property that is on the map. If we could pull up that map. It's the property that is shaded orange. Following the closing of the January 7th public hearing on the proposed annexation, council deferred action on the annexation so that several conditions could be met that were essential to the fire department being able to provide services. And I'll read those conditions. Number one, that a new driveway must be established off of Maya Drive. And the new driveway off of Maya Drive must be a minimum of 15 feet in width. Thirdly, the new driveway must be of sufficient construction to support a fire apparatus and a cross-section demonstrating this, and sealed by a civil engineer should be submitted to the city engineering department for review and approval prior to construction. And the address of the subject property shall be changed to a Maya Drive address as well. All of those were essential to our fire department being able to provide service to the subject property. At that time, we did not have a companion zoning request on the property. But as I mentioned, we do conduct a public hearing on that property on January 7. And that is why that item A has been removed from the agenda because the public hearing on the annexation petition in the plan of services has actually already been conducted. Since that time, the status of the property has changed in that a developer has the property under contract and has requested PRD zoning simultaneous with annexation, which is the next public hearing that we'll be holding tonight. Because of the application for zoning, staff recommends that council consider the resolution to adopt a plan of services and the resolution to annex the property prior to the next public hearing. Staff recommends that the resolution to adopt the plan of services be adopted as presented on January the 7th, and that the resolution to annex the property be effective only upon the occurrence of one of the following: either those four conditions that I just read be met, or that the zoning of the property become effective. If the city council approves the zoning, then the zoning doesn't go into effect, or the annexation doesn't go into effect until the zoning goes into effect. So essentially, before the zoning goes into effect and the annexation goes into effect, the issues could be resolved. But regardless, the revised resolution that has those conditions are on your desks in front of you. And also, I've placed a revised plan of services. The plan of services that was in your agenda packets was outdated, and a more up-to-date plan of services has been placed on your desks in front of you. I'll be happy to answer any questions. The two items, B and C, that are on the agenda deal with the actual annexation petition and the annexation plan of services. We do need to vote on those tonight. And with the way that Mr. Ives has worded the resolution, the issues that the fire department has can be resolved prior to the effective date of annexation. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Ms. Blomley?
And just as a reminder also, this is just pertaining to the annexation. The zoning will be the next public hearing. And we still are having the public hearing for the zoning tonight.
So since we deferred this, we need, we did have the public hearing on the annexation and plan of services, but did not vote on that. So we need to go ahead and vote for plan of services and for the annexation.
Yes, sir. The annexation public hearing was held and closed after the public hearing was over.
Move we adopt the plan of services and annexation.
We would ask that those be by separate resolutions in order to make sure we're fully compliant with state law. So appropriate would be first, adopt the resolution to approve the plan of services.
So moved.
Thank you. Second.
Motion of second. Ms. Wright.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. We'll now consider for adoption Resolution 15R866 to annex approximately 5.96 acres along Foxfire Court and incorporate the same within the corporate boundaries of the city of Murfreesboro, Tennessee, Linda Smith applicant, 2015-507.
And this would be the new resolution in the form that is loose from the agenda packet and on your desk. And it contains, as Mr. Blomley stated, one of two things has to happen before this becomes effective. Either a zoning ordinance for the property has to go into effect, or the four conditions that were recommended by the planning commission have to be met.
Move we approve the resolution.
Motion of second. Ms. Wright.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Pursuant to Resolution 15R PH66.1 adopted by the city council on June 16, 2016, will need to conduct a public hearing to consider zoning of approximately six acres along Spike Trail and Maya Drive, Foxfire Court, simultaneous with annexation. Notice to the said public hearing was published in the July 4, 2016 issue of a local newspaper.
Thank you again, Mayor and council members. This next item is for you to conduct a public hearing to consider an application that's been made to you to change the zoning of property simultaneous with its annexation. This property is colored orange in the map that's in your packet, and that's available on the screen. And you can see this property has frontage along Maya Drive, Foxfire Court, and Spike Trail. The properties to the east and south are part of a planned residential development called Indian Creek. And this is proposed to be an additional phase of the Indian Creek development. What's immediately adjacent to the south and the majority of the west are single-family homes. And you can see just the north where it looks like larger lots. That's the location of some multifamily developments, some condominiums or townhomes. And then the properties to the east and north are in the unincorporated area of Rutherford County and develop as a single-family residence. The applicants for the zoning are Old South properties who are requesting that you consider approving the Villas Indian Creek Section 4 PRD. The applicant for the annexation, which you just previously considered, is of course the property owner as required by state law. The applicants wish to purchase the property and zone it to PRD to make it a part of the Indian Creek subdivision and to allow it to develop with some multifamily units for 70 dwelling units on six acres, which is a density of 11.7 dwelling units per acre. None of these units have attached garages. They all have surface parking, and they are providing, are committing to an additional 18 parking spaces per the PRD program book. This is going to be units that are for sale and not just for one owner to own them all and rent them all, although individual owners could rent them if they so choose. There was much conversation at the Planning Commission Public Hearing regarding connectivity. Staff was very much in favor of having connectivity at both Maya Drive and at the intersection of Spike Trail and Foxfire Court. As we know, connectivity is important for service providers, for solid waste providers, for school bus drivers, and also emergency service providers. And also, one of the, something that's been pointed out in the 2035 plan is the importance of connectivity. Those of you who've been involved in the development have heard or noticed that that's been stated throughout the project, that it's a recommendation that neighborhoods do have connectivity. So that is the recommendation of staff. I just wanted to point out that it was greatly discussed. The evening of the public hearing, there was one no vote, and the other votes were yes, that you should rezone this property to PRD, or zone it to PRD. The recommendation was also that they hold a neighborhood meeting, and that was held this week. And I'm going to invite the applicant elector to go through the specifics of the program book. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them either before or after the public hearing.
Thank you, Ms. Green. Good evening, Mayor McFarland, members of the council. My name's Matt Taylor of SEC. And I'm accompanied tonight by Mr. John Floyd and Dan Bobo of Old South Properties, the applicants for the zoning of this property. We're here tonight to give you a brief presentation over what we've called Villas Indian Creek Section 4. We envision this to be an extension of the Indian Creek community that was established back in 2003, 2004, and was fully built out in the 2007-ish timeframe. If you will put the, as Ms. Green said, the property is about six acres, located in the Blackman Community at the end of Maya Drive and to the south of Foxfire Court. We're bounded on the western side and southern side by other portions of Indian Creek, and then on the north and east by county subdivisions. Currently, the land is mostly open lawn and pasture with one existing residence on the property, which we will remove as part of our project. You can see the surrounding area is a mixture of zonings. What's surrounding us is our single family. This is some of the existing townhomes in the Indian Creek neighborhood, some of the existing homes along Foxfire Court. That's a shot of the property itself. This is from the northeast corner of the property, looking back into it from Foxfire Court. As Ms. Green said, we are requesting the PRD zoning, which will allow for 70 townhomes on just under six acres in size. We're proposing all of our utilities to be underground. And the unit sizes here will range from 1,200 square feet to 1,450 square feet, which matches the neighborhood in Indian Creek. These developments, these homeowners would join the existing HOA within Indian Creek, pay their dues, and have access to the same amenities and HOA protections as the other residences within Indian Creek itself. All these units will be sold under a horizontal property regime, which essentially means they'll own what's inside their walls. Everything exterior will be maintained by the HOA. All these streets will be private and be maintained by the HOA as well. Be a walkable community. We're going to have sidewalks throughout. And we are actually committed to constructing a sidewalk along Maya Drive to connect back in with the existing sidewalk network within Indian Creek so that our residences can access the amenities and those sidewalks that were previously constructed. We are planning landscape buffers around all four sides of our project. Our trash enclosure, which is located in the southwest corner of the project, will be screened with a masonry wall and further with additional landscaping, evergreens around that. And the site has an abundance of parking, so we make sure we meet the city ordinance as well as our guest requirements there. The units themselves, our architecture and materials are going to match exactly what we did in Indian Creek. Make sure our brick, vinyl siding, front porches. The units are all two-story townhomes, as I mentioned earlier, starting at 1,200 square feet and going up to approximately 1,450 square feet in size. Just an example of the layouts and floor plans. All these homes will have front porches and rear patios, just like Indian Creek. Amenities, because we are joining the existing HOA, will have access to the existing amenities as well as we're planning to construct a gazebo within this portion of the development. And we've got a fairly large stormwater area that will be allowed and be used for passive recreation in between rain events. This is an example and highlighting the location of the planned gazebo within Section 4. Here's where we're planning on constructing the sidewalk along the southern side of Maya Drive to connect back into the Indian Creek sidewalk network. The existing amenities within Indian Creek are located along Pocket Creek. They include a playground, walking trails, and benches, all of which our neighbors and residences will have access to. Then we've also got two points of ingress and egress planned. Our primary point is envisioned off of Maya Drive. As it comes into the property, we'll connect on there. And our secondary point would be onto Foxfire Court in this location. I'll be happy to answer any questions, as well as the applicants now or after the public hearing.
Any questions for Mr. Taylor? Okay, saying we'll need to conduct a public hearing for this request. If you have any comments, if you'll come to the podium, address all your comments to the city council. If you're representing a group, you have five minutes. If you're representing an individual, you have three minutes. If you'll state your name and address. We're not quite ready yet. If you'll give me one minute. If you'll state all of your comments to the council, we'll get those questions, we'll have to close the public hearing, and then we'll get those questions answered at the end of the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak for or against? The public hearing is open.
Mayor and city council members, my name is Belinda Brown. I live at 117 Vastar Court. I'm 50 yards from the proposed development in the unincorporated area. And I've been named the spokesman for our neighborhood. I do have some handouts that I'd like to pass out or give to someone. Can I do that? And I also have petitions where we have 127 names. Yeah, if everyone could just have a copy of those four pages. Thank you. I appreciate your time. We met with the builder's representative, Matt Taylor, and staff from Old South on Monday night at the Blackman Community Center for our neighborhood meeting. The proposal is what we presented on page one. The builder indicated during that time that they could agree to item one, to have one egress on Maya Drive with an emergency gate at Foxfire Court and Spike Trail. Item six, to have a minimum of 35-foot setback versus our 40-foot that we had requested. Item seven, a pavilion, which was already in the original plans, but we didn't know that. But we had asked for grills, picnic tables, and playgrounds, but that was yet to be determined. And item eight, which asked for fast-growing trees along the perimeter, which is also in the original plans. We appreciate that they were willing to make those things happen. Those items, however, did not address our main concern. And can I ask a few questions of the mayor and city council while I'm doing this?
Yeah, if you'll ask the questions, we'll get those answered at the end of the public hearing.
Since the parcel of land is still counting, their request to build a planned residential development or PRD on that parcel requires annexation and zoning to be approved by you. While you are considering your decision for this project, I wanted to make sure that you're aware of current construction going on in the area, and ask that if it's in your, if it's your intent for the city of Murfreesboro to increase the volume of multifamily units, I'd like to point out that over 600 apartments at two locations are currently under construction within two miles of the proposed site. Please see page two. And I ask that while you consider the zoning request for a PRD, I would like to state that there are also already 260 townhomes and 260 single-family homes in the neighboring villas at Preserve, the villas and the Preserve at Indian Creek, phases one through three. This 70-unit development is Phase Four. These are highlighted in yellow on pages three and four. We are saturated with multifamily units in the neighborhood, as well as all along Fortress Boulevard from I-24 until it intersects with Old Ford Parkway. Boulevard from I-24 until it intersects with Old Ford Parkway, which will further impact the Blackman School District. The property is currently RM, medium-density residential, which allows for three units per acre. I would respectfully ask that you vote not to approve the rezoning request for a PRD, and if you approve the annexation, that you only approve zoning for RS-10 or greater. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Brown. Okay, anyone else wishing to speak? Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. We'll consider for passage on first reading, Orange 15OZ66, the zone approximately six acres along Spike Trail and Maya Drive, Foxfire Court, is planned residential development, PRD district simultaneous with annexation. Old South Properties, Inc., applicant. Ms. Green and Mr. Ballmer, I think we had a couple of questions. One, staff's read through the minutes on the planning commission, but the Item 1, only have one ingress on the Maya Drive?
We... Staff has recommended that there be two points of ingress/egress. And at the neighborhood meeting, it may be that the developer said that they're fine having a crash gate, but it... The apartment heads have talked about the issue of connectivity and still believe it's important to have the access points on both drives and not limit one of them to crash gate. The streets within this development are a private development, so the additional traffic that would be generated would be coming from or to this development. You wouldn't expect it to be cut through Traffic Fortress Boulevard to another road because they would ordinarily not travel through these private streets that are in this development. And I've talked to Mr. Whitaker, our city engineer, about this matter, and they still believe that, I mean, what your wishes are is what we will go with, that it's important, though, to maintain those two access points.
And I know we've had lots of discussion about apartments, but are these apartments or are they townhomes?
So, in the city of Murfreesboro, it's considered multifamily. So, if it's a traditional apartment complex where you rent the unit, or if it's a townhome where you can purchase your unit and have common area, those are both forms of multifamily development. And we've heard some concern from members of the Planning Commission City Council regarding that there may be a perceived too many apartments. So, we've decided to do some research, and Mr. Whitaker is conducting that research now and expects to have a report to you before the August 3 Planning Commission meeting just on the status of multifamily.
This project is reading through as a Tennessee horizontal property regime, which means that individual owners own these apartments, or not apartments own these units?
They would own the building, and then the HOA, what's outside of it would be common area, and they'd pay HOA fees that maintain the exterior of the buildings and the parking lot and those things.
So, it's not an apartment?
It's not a traditional apartment, no. It's considered multifamily, but it's not a suburban apartment.
And then we had a question on setback?
The... I haven't been told by the developers that they could increase the setback to 40 feet, but if that's something they can do, I think this development, they probably could squeeze that in. They do have the buffer I she mentioned, and they are showing a gazebo. Let's see, grills, picnics, playgrounds, none of those are in the program book, but you can certainly require them. The buffer that's required is 15 feet, and then there's a building setback that's additional.
I think Mr. Taylor's behind you, so... And I'm just trying to make sure that Ms. Brown's questions get answered, so...
Yes, sir. I think there was a little bit of confusion there in each of those points, the access points. I think we expressed to Ms. Brown that while we didn't necessarily need it or even necessarily desire it, you know, staff feels like it's an important item, so we will certainly go along with staff's recommendation. As far as the setbacks, we talked about how far off the property line our setbacks were, which ranged from about 20 or 25, but some... And then some of the units are 35-plus feet off, but we did not agree to move all those off the property line. So, our proposal is as it is outlined inside the existing patent book.
Council members, did I miss any of the questions?
No, but as a utility person, you know, connectivity is the truth. You know, I worked on some tornadoes and wind damage and stuff with Milton City Electric in that neighborhood. So, lack of connectivity to Spike Trail gives me a little bit of an issue because you've got to get in and you've got to get out. And, I mean, just for public safety, public service, the whole nine yards. So, I'm probably going to vote no, because you've got to have that connectivity. You know, you just... I know, I've been there, how to get in and how to get out and how to, you know, do some different things. And, you know, I know that a lot of folks want, and I'm talking too much, you know, want to be isolated, have their own conclusive, you know, don't want to have any traffic running through their neighborhoods and whatever. You live in a public society, so I'm probably going to vote no, because we've got to have access, period. And I live to the hill.
Right now, there's no crash gate, or is there?
No, there is no crash gate.
Both the entrances are completely open to the public, is what we've got proposed in the booklet.
Connectivity, as long as we have connectivity, I'm good, you know, but other than that...
And you know, that's all the 20, 35 is possible.
Can't have it. Been there.
Just to clarify, Mayor, the proposal that we're considering is to have the Foxfire, is that the street? What's Spike Trail opened through connectivity?
Okay, then that works for me.
The only thing I'll ask you is a question just about the road. When you come in off Spike Trail, I don't know if I, you know, I'm not qualified to really look at this, but if I was looking, if somebody's coming off a Spike Trail and trying to get to Fortress, so if you come in from the left here and kind of run through here, they would come in and be able to just take a right and then a left and then a right back out, out onto Maya Drive, or to go to Fortress, right?
It's not a straight shot. They would have to make several turns.
Yeah, they've got to make a right, a left, and then a right. It's hard to look at like that, sorry, but...
Right, yeah, right, left, right, yep.
Is that... The way that that road is structured in this drawing right here, with those parking spots that are perpendicular like that, I mean, is there enough room? Is that... I mean, I just can't... It'll carry traffic through there fine in case people do go that way, but I think the turns will keep people from wanting to do a lot of that, but it will get traffic through there okay?
Part of the design was to keep it looking like a straight shot or an easy cut-through. We think that it'll handle the expected traffic in all these private drives.
And am I right, just kind of thinking, I just did some quick math on my phone. If this was a, you know, an RS-8, RS-10-type development, we'd be talking 30 or 35 homes if I did my math right.
That's about right, yeah.
So, we're talking about an extra 30 or 40 units total by doing it this way, right? Is that about right?
It's about twice as much, that's right.
Okay, sorry, Matt, just so I'm clear on what I'm doing here.
Number one, it sounds like that's not going to be an issue as far as having the one egress. I think we're hearing that. But then there was also, on the setback, you're saying that some will have, some won't have, the 35-foot setback, right?
Yes, sir. I think we've got some in the northwest corner and some in the southern side that will be setback off of portions of those property lines, the 35 feet. But the requested setbacks in here are 15, and most of those buildings are about 20 to 25 feet off the property line.
And so, and then you were going to do number eight. Was number eight the last one that you guys did? Are you going to put the spruce trees up? Is that...
We're... They're not spruce. What we had talked about was some of the fastest-growing and common plants that we use in our buffers, which are junipers and arborvitae, and they are... They grow as fast as anything else.
What most people probably think is a spruce tree, I mean, a juniper, right?
Yes, yes.
All right.
Any more questions? I'm going to move for approval.
Second.
Motion second. Ms. Wright.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
Well, now I consider recommendations of the planning commission to schedule public
Thank you, Mayor McFarland. First one bears a little bit of explanation. At its June 23 city council meeting, the city council conducted a public hearing on the annexation of over 70 acres located on New Salem Highway. William and Caroline Waite were the applicants. At that time, the city council approved the annexation resolution and plan of services. At that same night, there was a public hearing scheduled for the zoning simultaneous with annexation. There was CF, RZ, and RM12 requested for that property. Staff gave its presentation for the zoning, but then after staff gave its presentation, Mr. Brick Murphy, the applicant's representative, came up to the podium and stated that his client wished to request a deferral. So, the public hearing was actually not conducted on that night, and the city council, the mayor and council honored Mr. Murphy's request to defer action. And so, now we bring this back before you tonight to schedule the public hearing for the zoning of approximately 74 acres along New Salem Highway to CF, RM12, and RZ simultaneous with annexation. William and Caroline Waite are the applicants. That's the first item, and the other four were considered by the planning commission at its July 13 meeting, and all were recommended for approval. The zoning of approximately 150.5 acres located along Joby Jackson Parkway to amend the PID, Planned Industrial Development Zoning District, Parkway Place, Joe Swanson Jr. was the applicant. Rezoning of approximately 13.5 acres located along Brinkley Road from the CF zone to PRD, Planned Residential District for the Wilkerson Downs PRD. Robert Francis and Jeff Gill were the applicants. Fourth, the rezoning of approximately two acres located along North Rutherford Boulevard and Old Last Cassis Road from CF to CH. Eric Lowman was the applicant. And finally, the rezoning of approximately 44 acres located along Armstrong Valley Road from RS15 to RS8. Cornerstone Development was the applicant. All five of these public hearings should be able to be handled in one night. There is anticipated that several of them will have some public participation, but it is anticipated that they could be handled in one night. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
I'm probably going to abstain from Item C, if that's appropriate.
Do we have a date, Mr. Tenmore?
Recommend August 18th, Mayor.
Mr. Ballmer, the Joby Jackson public hearing, do you expect that to be a...
I believe that at planning commission, the Joby Jackson public hearing took approximately 50 to 60 minutes, and Items C, D, and E, there was relatively little public participation. Item A, we did have public participation, so it's... A and B would likely be the most time-consuming public hearings.
I will say that the one on Joby Jackson, at the end of the hour or so of discussion, there was an amendment made that increased the size of the wall, which is what everybody was asking for, so I don't think there will be as much opposition for it at council level as there was at the planning commission level.
Let me ask you one question while we're looking at our calendars. So, did the... Did Item A, it looks the same. Is it back up? Is the... Does it no change? The public hearing got deferred, but it's going to come back up as no change?
That's correct. It's the same request. The public hearing was not conducted on the 23rd of June at the request of the developer, so it's almost like the city council is starting from scratch on this particular application.
You want to motion for the August 18th? Move we set a public hearing August 18th?
Right, we're going to motion second, Ms. Wright.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ballmer. Okay, we'll consider recommendations of Parks and Recreation Assistant Director with regards to proposal for restroom building replacements at Two Greenway Trailheads.
Mayor, members of the council, thanks for having me tonight. I'm here tonight to recommend replacement of the restrooms at the Manson Pike and Thompson Lane trailheads of the Murfreesboro Greenway system. As you know, the Stones River Greenway was built in 1996. The Lidle Creek Greenway was added in 1997 and is very heavily used. What we have recently done is put together an assessment to really address maintenance and safety concerns and to weigh the priorities for repairs and renovations. As a part of that process, the replacement of those two restrooms at Manson Pike and Thompson Lane are the next in the queue to be addressed. What we have done is worked with Loson Associates to develop the plans and specification, and in cooperation with the city of Murfreesboro's purchasing department, a request for competitive sealed proposals was issued. Two bids were received and scored, and the proposal from Hunter Nepshill Company was selected for recommendation. What we're looking at is two 9-foot by 12-foot restroom buildings that are self-contained, a unit price of $58,795 each. The removal of the old restrooms and the installation of these will be done through our city's engineering stormwater contract with Rollins and Company. The funding for it will be allocated through our capital, or has been allocated in our capital funds for Greenway reconstruction. So, my respectful recommendation tonight is to approve that agreement and move forward with the replacement of the restrooms at Manson Pike and Thompson Lane.
I'll move for approval.
Second.
Motion second. Ms. Wright.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Yes.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Looks like we have a few bear permits.
We do, Mayor. We have a special event permit for the Discovery Center for two events, one to be held on September 16th and one for January 12th of 2017. That particular application is ready. If you approve that for us to go ahead and issue that one. We also have a application from a new grocery store to be... We also have a application from a new grocery store to be located at 143 Wendell Wood Drive. That particular loc, that particular application is complete except for the building codes inspections, and we recommend approval upon that once they meet their final inspections. Additionally, we have a location for a hotel at 1306 Gresham Park Drive. That application is also in order, but it does lack the final building codes inspections, and we would like to issue that permit upon those being approved with your permission. And finally, we have a new restaurant to be opened at 109 North Maple Street, which has had beer there before. That application is also in order, and we recommend approval once they also complete their building codes inspections, which are pending. We'll be glad to try to answer any questions.
Will one motion get them all?
Yes, sir.
Everything's in order?
Yes, sir.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion second, Ms. Wright.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
Don't have any boards and commission appointments, any statements that Mr. Smotherman, we want to make a motion to?
There was a statement laid out tonight.
There, there is a statement for fuel at the airport, and I approve, I would make the motion that we pay the bills.
Second.
Motion second, Ms. Wright.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
I think we do have one item of other business from Mr. Lyons.
Yes, sir. Due to make, required by the city code, I do, I am required to let you know when we have an emergency purchase. The aerator at the wastewater treatment plant had a problem this past week. 4,000-pound impeller fell to the bottom of the well, so we did have to get emergency crews out there. We've determined that, that aerator impeller needs to be replaced. The cost of it will be $43,394. Parts been ordered. You can't find those on the shelf. It'll need to be fabricated, but really want to compliment the team at Water and Sewer who did everything they needed to do to make sure that we did not have a catastrophic fail at the wastewater plant. So, it is my recommendation that you approve the emergency purchase.
Move for approval.
Motion second. Ms. Wright.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
Any other business for staff or city council? I put on your, and I'm totally fine if y'all, because I gave you short notice, but I put a guide, sort of a guideline for our council retreat that we've talked about having the end of August. If you want to read over that, or we're welcome to discuss it now, or if you'd rather wait till next week to discuss that, that's totally up to everyone.
We will be meeting next week.
Yep. Would y'all rather just wait and do that next week?
Yes, sir.
Was he saying eight, or what?
Well, really, just the format that really sat and tried to, from what the council had, had talked about, it seems like an eternity ago, but five or six weeks ago, it quickly came apparent that it's gonna be really hard to have one meeting to address everything, I think, that everyone wants to talk about. So, try to come up with a process that we could do in 45 or 60 days, but really break it up into maybe four different sessions that we talk about. You know, we have a kickoff that we talk about more big-picture items, but then from there, we go into finance, because we've had a lot of different things we've talked about on the budget this year. And these are just suggestions, human resources, and then operations, and then if we want to get into the 2035 workshop, we can, but, you know, I suspect we're gonna have a lot of discussion on that anyway. And then from those individual meetings, we would put together sort of the framework of what we wanted to discuss at the actual retreat. But, and, and Ms. K, Ms. Tig has talked, and it looks like that we've got August the 22nd is a date that's available for our, for our first session. And even though the, the one thing that we may want to do is wait until first week of September after the new council members are sworn in, or we still could invite, you know, the one council member that is, is with the three council, unless there's a huge writing campaign for someone, so, but we could invite that, the council member and presumed council member, and then still have the same goal setting, so.
How long are you envisioning each of these, Shane?
You know, really, what, we're not, really, we're not gonna put a timeline on it. You know, I, I could see that the budgeting, the financial workshop could take a lot longer than maybe a human resources workshop, or, or vice versa. So, you know, I think we maybe put a two- or three-hour window on there, and if it takes longer, then it, it takes longer.
Maybe start with lunch, and then just kind of block out the afternoon.
Yeah.
Is that something?
What day is the 22nd?
Monday.
Okay.
Well, and the thing we may want to look at is that week on, we're already looking at the 24th, I think's the date that we're gonna be meeting the, for the 2035 plan, and that's an 11 to 3 meeting, so it may be tough for everyone working and taking off, you know, basically two full days during the same week. So, what we may want to do is maybe look at the next week, which would be, would give time after the council members are sworn in, if that, if you're okay with the format, I think it's easy to, to get the dates nailed down from there, but, and if you're not, I mean, this is just a suggestion, so if there's some other ideas, I'm all for that.
We can conceivably do the 29th or 30th. I mean, that, that may be before the swearing-in, but.
Yeah, the swearing-in, I believe, is gonna be September the 1st, but I think, as the mayor said, if you can have an idea that the, this template works well, then we can double back on the calendar and start booking days into September, because you're not gonna get it all done before September 1st. But if we had the days allocated, then we could plan around it and spread the workload accordingly for both you and for staff in the prep for it.
So, how about we do this? How about everyone read over it, and then what we'll do is, if, if everyone will be prepared next week, so that way we don't have to make any quick decisions. If there's anything that, you know, I even thought it would be to set a framework for, for what we're doing. Kermit Davis spoke at a recent event for some groups that came in from Nashville. You know, I'm sure Kermit would love to talk with us if we want someone to come in, just sort of to kick it off. But there's, there's lots of different things that we could do, so if you'll look over that, let's discuss on, look at your calendars. Let's try to figure something, and we'll be ready for, for our next, the 28th, for our next meeting. We'll tell you this, also, shifting gears, Mr. Lyons and I met with Chairman Rogers and Steve Sacks, the general manager of MED, had a, had a good meeting yesterday, but really, I think what we relayed based on the letter that they had sent, that this, that I got from the city council, that, you know, when we met in June, that we wanted to at least have a discussion with the power board by the end of July, that there didn't have to be any decisions that were made, but nothing hurts getting together and communicating, and, you know, there was really not any need to get the, the power board to be working on getting an information or presentation together, because it, we really just wanted to sit and have some open dialogue, and did make the suggestion that we have a power board meeting on the 27th, which works out great, that the power board, power board can also discuss this at the power board meeting. So, we all talked about still continue, still meeting on 28th, and, and then at least having discussion, and then if, if we need to have additional meetings from there, we can, we can do that. So, that meeting, I think, is 5:00 on the 28th?
Yes, sir.
All right. We, we'd like to close by just saying, you know, over the last two or three weeks, I'm definitely not gonna touch the political aspect, but we've had a lot of service providers lost across the country, in Dallas and Louisiana, that lost their lives, and, you know, we, we had the privilege tonight of accepting award on behalf of our police officers, and I think the main thing I just want to say is we appreciate the, the work and the service that our, our emergency service providers give us, and I can speak on behalf of Murfreesboro, and I think I speak for you guys, that they make us proud every day for the job that they do. So, we're, families who have lost loved ones are, are in our thoughts and our prayers. Seeing no other business, we'll stand adjourned.